All right. Greg should be back any minute, but let's get going. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and take attendance. I'm here. Alan? Not yet. You said you think he's coming. Okay, we'll see. John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Jim?
Yeah.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Here.
Michael's not going to join us tonight. Julie?
Here.
Jennifer? Hello? And Pete?
Here.
Thank you. So we have a quorum. Moving on to item number two, public comments. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number three, the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none. The item on the consent agenda, the minutes for the education meeting of November 19th passes. Item number four, Chair's Report. The Executive Committee met again last week to finalize the superintendent's evaluation process and methodology. I'll say we are about done, right? Except for some minor editing. So what we'll do is we'll, the next board meeting, we'll put it on the agenda and then we'll present it to the balance of the board for adoption, approval and adoption, and we'll go from there. The next, Jim?
If I may, I'm sorry.
Please.
If you could get that to the board members in advance at a meeting, that would be helpful.
Yeah, well, as soon as, as soon as we do these last cleanups, we will. Not a problem. The next item on the, on the agenda for the Exec Committee is we're going to just start reviewing the bylaws. We've noticed that there is a number of, as we start going through these things, we're cross-referencing them, like for example, the superintendent's evaluation process. You know, we asked out loud, is there a policy that governs this? Should there be a policy? There probably definitely needs to be a policy. It may give a glancing reference to it, but I'm sure there's something we can update, modernize. But we're also going to present to the board the notion of taking some of this work and memorializing it in a, in a bylaw so that future boards don't have to wrestle with this perennially. And, but yeah, we could talk more about, about that. But we're going to start looking at, at the bylaws. So with that, I'll turn it over to Megan.
Good evening, everyone. All right, a couple of updates. We had our eighth grade orientation, the introduction to high school, on Tuesday, November 27th at Chapag. We saw triple the amount of attendees this year. And we had families from each of the sending towns attend. They were able to hear about each one of our content areas. They heard from our instructional leaders. And I can tell you that I was cornered by a couple of parents to make certain that they knew all the, all the criteria in order to get into the agri-science program. So I saw that as a huge success and testament to the work that's been done by everyone throughout all of these years. We do have an internet safety presentation on Monday, December 17th, 7:00 at Chapag. This has been a continued effort from our schools. We had an event that was held at Booth Free to help educate our families. We know that as we are trying to get into digital education, make certain our students are not restricted by the boundaries of the classroom, we're also coupling that with safety and making certain that they understand some ways to keep themselves out of trouble. Sometimes being a bystander can still have some ramifications. So we want to make certain that that is something we educate our parents on. The Holiday Bazaar for Chapag is Thursday, December 6th at 6:15, and I know that is something that is always an exciting time for our community. Some other updates, we have Power School. We have completed all of the training for the elementary school staff. The grades are entered and we are right now ready for our report card distribution on December 14th. Additionally, the quarter one email transition to quarter two were not automatic. So we appreciate all of the families that let us know. They were still getting old grades and needed to get some of the new information to make certain their students were continuing to do well. So Vic was able to go in, manually do that. And so if parents are still receiving incorrect quarter information, please make certain you send us an email. So elementary schools, this next region in review will be a focus on our elementary schools. And we know we had a number of events that were going on, so it will be saturated with photos from the celebrations that were held and continue to be held at our elementary schools. At Chapag, some updates, we appreciate the approval for the Quebec trip. However, it had to be canceled due to lack of interest. And the cost would be too high based on the number of students that were interested in going. Beginning on Friday, December 14th, we do have our drama club production. So we are very excited for our Picasso set in the 20th century Paris. And the 90-minute play will feature an ensemble cast of 11 students. And we know that we have our new drama director who has led our staff. The kids really have been empowered to do all the marketing promotions, and so we're really looking forward to anyone who gets to go. I know our students will continue to shine. So, some personnel updates that we have. We have Michael Beauches, Director of Guidance for Region 12 Schools. He actually is starting today. Michael comes to us from Danbury, and he impressed us with his knowledge of the college process, understanding of 504 plans, resume preparation, and his passion and commitment to student achievement and college attainment. Michael is looking forward to working with students at all levels of students in Region 12. Additionally, we have Elizabeth Dillarada. She will be a first-grade teacher at Washington Primary School. Elizabeth is set to start on January 2nd, and she comes to us from a charter school in Waterbury. Elizabeth has taught kindergarten, third, and fifth grade, and as I said, will be working with our first graders at Washington Primary. I also would like to present to the board Nicole Grant as Business Director for Region 12 with a start date of January 28th, 2019. Nicole has been the CFO and interim executive director of Hillview Charter School in New Haven. Nicole has been CFO during a move and renovation and comes with experience of budgeting, operation understanding, and grant seeking.
Is that a front office position? Is that two front office positions?
Two front offices.
The two people you just announced?
Um.
The last two?
The business manager would be.
No, no, the two you were just discussing, I'm sorry. The last two.
The Director of Guidance?
Yeah, okay.
That's, I'm sorry.
The last one.
And that's a first-grade teacher.
Oh, okay. You weren't talking about anybody in the front office?
No, there's nobody in the front office.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No, it's just, just.
I guess I'm confused, sorry.
No, it's okay. So as far as with Nicole, we, as I said, she comes to us with some office manager position as well, some, working at a law firm, senior legal assistant. So her degree is in economics from Trinity College. And so at this time, I'd like to turn it over.
Can I make a motion to approve the appointment of Nicole Grant as Business Director of Region 12 effective 28 January 2019 in accordance with the terms and conditions of her contract?
Second.
Okay, the motion's on the floor. It's been seconded. Any, any questions, discussion? If not, Michelle?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm excited for Nicole to come and to work with someone new, and I wanted to thank Bob for his many, many years of service. And I, I know that, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Nicole to be able to learn from Bob. A lot of the history that Bob has, you know, I'm hoping we'll have a nice overlap and a seamless transition because there's a lot of great information there. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I think that'll be great. But thank you, Bob.
John?
Bob, is this your last meeting? No, okay.
She doesn't start for a while.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, he's not going anywhere.
John, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a comment. I will not vote in favor of this appointment for two reasons. I think the starting salary, based on this candidate's credentials, is too high, and I don't think that we should, the initial hire would warrant an 18-month contract.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Well, any abstentions? You got it? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. I think the floor is still yours. Megan?
And we'll know when it's Bob's last meeting because I will certainly gush over his efforts and his support. It's been my pleasure. So you're not rid of us yet, Bob. So leaves of absence, we do have Charlene Barstale, our math teacher at Chapag. She will be out from November 26th to December 21st, 2018. We also have the resignation of Stephanie Maynard, Educational Assistant at Washington Primary, effective November 20th, 2018. So, I had the privilege of attending the CAAB conference with Michelle Gora. We were able to have a three-day conference, and I have to tell you, walking away from that conference, learning about the workshops we had in technology, policy, union negotiations, assessments, and I think recognizing all the services that CAAB can offer us, and I do think we, we are under utilizing some of the things that they have, including some of the negotiation materials preparation, some of those policy audits. So if it's okay, I'd like to invite Michelle to also contribute on some of the things that, some learnings.
So I just wanted to share a couple of things. The first is to just tell you about the Delegate Assembly, which was the first night, and to just explain, especially for those of you who are new. So CAAB, which is the Connecticut Association's of Boards of Education, is, one of the things that they do for the, for all of the member boards is lobby the state. So as things are happening, legislation is, is being discussed, they are up there in the Education Committee hearings, testifying, talking in behind the scenes, making sure everyone's being represented. So anyway, so that's one of the things that CAAB does. But in order to know how to represent us, meaning not just our board but all boards, that we have, we have to vote on a, on a platform, basically. So, so I brought, just, let's see, you got, you always get a copy of it at, at, once a year. It's all of the things that, it's like, that CAAB stands for on all of the different issues. But that is determined at the Delegate Assembly. So that's, I just wanted to explain kind of how that, how that goes. So, so when we, we get there on Thursday, we, we go over any of the new issues and representatives from boards all over the state vote and create this platform for CAAB so that at the drop of a hat, they know where the boards stand on, as a whole. And CAPS, which is the Association of Principals and Superintendents, has the same, you know, an association that's very similar, and CAAB and CAPS work together on many things. Very rarely are they at odds. So they are up there in Hartford trying to explain to legislators how these, all these, this different legislation affects school boards and the cost of that and everything like that. So just wanted to, to let you know. And if you ever have any questions about that, I mean, I'm just up there representing you, and you, thank you for your trust in that, I guess. I abstained from one vote because I had not discussed it with you all, and I wasn't really, I didn't feel I had enough background. It was about taking a position on the legalization of marijuana. Obviously, I would, I think we're all in agreement that it doesn't belong in the hands of children, but whether legalizing it makes it easier or harder, I didn't feel I had enough information on, and didn't feel that I had the opinion of the board to weigh in. As it turned out, the Assembly voted in favor, it was a very close vote. So they, in favor of, wait.
Restricting.
Restricting it, keeping it illegal. So, so that is the official position of CAAB for now, and it can come up again if somebody wants to, to change that, but.
Michelle, if you notice, their position, that they oppose it for the schools or that they are opposed to it passing, becoming legal in Connecticut?
They're opposed to it becoming legal in Connecticut. Yeah, that was, that was the position.
It has nothing to do with the schools. I mean, it does.
No, right, exactly. And so, and there was debate about whether that's even a stance that CAAB should be involved in, but.
It's the issue.
As it affects children and, and it's, you know, marijuana making, being an issue for our students, they felt that they wanted to have a position on that, so.
If the state passes law, whatever it may be, it'll impact the school, the schools will have to react in some way.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
I think.
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, policy, yeah.
Okay.
I would say the schools will be impacted if that changes, whether we have to change, because I would imagine it would be illegal for minors. So really, our, our policy won't change, but how the, our students are impacted could change.
Michelle, was there anything on the agenda that, I don't know, what was like most interesting, what do you think would be on, on there that would be most interesting to us, should it pass?
One of the things that, that, I think this was the only one I spoke about, but it's, it's a topic that Teresa and I had talked about, and we've gone to several conferences. I'm trying to think of how it came, was on my radar, but anyway, it was about Carnegie units and graduation requirements, and the fact that in small schools especially, sometimes the state's requirements are onerous because our schedules are so tight. And if, if there could be some sort of recognition for mastery-based learning, you know, getting credit for, or being able to test out of certain things, it would free up time in our schedules, which, which would be helpful because we have so many singletons, it's very challenging sometimes for our students to put together a schedule. And I voted in favor of that last year, but it did not pass. This year, it came back as a study committee, for the state to study that. And it did pass narrowly, but, and there was some, kind of some talk about that because, I think mostly because a lot of people don't really understand the topic. But the flexibility in, moving away from the Carnegie units, which Carnegie units is seat time. It's basically saying a kid has to be in their seat for 900 hours in order to earn a credit in something. And whereas mastery-based learning could look like many different things, either testing out or giving credit for things done in middle school if you're advancing your math, for example. I mean, there's, it could look like a lot of different things. But some of the other stuff is sort of straightforward. There was one called state grant timelines, trying to get the state's calendar to line up better with our calendar so that it's, it's not so, so after the fact. There often are some, some, in the beginning, talking about, like last year, we passed one about civility of discourse, so some sort of general things. Educator evaluation and support was another topic. So I think everyone is mailed the, the platform. So yeah, so you, you see kind of what we talk, I mean, there's a lot on there. I'm going actually up to Hartford tomorrow for a Government Relations Committee meeting to work on everything that was passed, because then what we do is we take all of the different positions, which, there's, there are a lot, I, I couldn't guess, but they have a, they have a position statement on possibly 40 or 50 items. And we take those and sort of condense it. There's a one page that then goes out every year as to sort of the highlights of, of things. The cost, the burden of proof for special education, right? That's the business, we're one of, I think, two states in the country, three, three states in the country where the burden of proof is on the school district. And it's, it's cumbersome. It's, it can be very expensive. So that was something that passed this year, which last year it did not. So that was another thing. So anyway, those are some of the things.
Thank you.
That was, so that's the Delegate Assembly. The other, I just, I'm not going to tell you about all of the conferences that I went to.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. But I just want to encourage other people to attend the conference, even if you can only go for a day. I understand going overnight, you know, it takes away, it's kind of sad that that, for me, that's like, exciting getaway. I'm like, ooh, time for me, but anyway. But, but I, I don't know, I find it rewarding. So I enjoy going. But anyway, even if you could only go for a half-day, the speakers are really remarkable. We had our, on Saturday, no, Friday, the opening speaker was Mark Brackett, who we will be hearing more about, probably. He is the, works at Yale, what is it called? I think I wrote it down. The, the, yeah, Emotional Intelligence is his title. It's got like a, a department. But anyway, he is promoting a program around social and emotional intelligence that, that their goal is to have his program in every district in Connecticut. Many districts are already on board. And Ed Advance held a workshop this, this, I don't know, sometime this school year, I think, where they brought him in to kind of give an overview. And Megan was familiar, has done some of the training. It's something that we would love to bring to our schools, but at the moment is very cost prohibitive because of their, their structure is per school, kind of like when we were looking at the IB program. You know, it doesn't matter that you might only have five teachers in one school, they still charge you per school. And so Ed Advance was trying to find a way to share that with everyone in the, sort of the northwest corner, a lot of the smaller districts. So they're working on that. So stay tuned. That's something that we will probably, if we don't do full board training, we'll be able to hear a little bit more about. But he was a very inspiring speaker. The other speaker that I thought was pretty remarkable is, his name is Freeman Hbrowski. And I'll, maybe I'll forward his name to you. He has several talks on YouTube. He's the president of the University of Maryland, and he was voted one of the 10 best college presidents by Time Magazine. He's just remarkable, his, his story, he's all about STEM. He has talks about why higher education matters and overcoming the odds, really interested in promoting math and science education right from the beginning, and seeing how, what we're doing in the, in the K-12 setting impacts what happens in college. So he had a lot of really interesting things to say, and just a very inspiring story. So I, I find that the, the speakers are usually worth listening to, just to kind of remind you of why we do this. So, so that's good. But then I also wanted to just mention, I went to, I went to a bunch of workshops, I won't tell you about all of them, but one of them was given by Preston Public Schools, and it's another small school district, and they had their first selectman, their board chair, and their superintendent there, and they talked about their budget process and how, how they work together. And, and they only have 450 students in their district, so I, I thought it was really interesting. Their cost per pupil is a little lower than ours, so I, I want to sort of dive in. I got his card, I spoke to him later, but just looking at how they, how they build their budget and how they, they had some really interesting cost-sharing things that they did between the town and the district, which we're doing a lot of already, but that was one that was particularly interesting to me. So I'll spare you the rest, but I would encourage people to go if you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle does a mean electric slide, so. Sorry, had to, had to put that out there. They're changing gears. Talking about the Prada report, we did receive the Prada report last week. This is the annual report that's conducted to track our enrollments so we can start looking at some of our trends, makes, you know, as, as educated decisions as we can on the predictive data for our three towns. Much of the information is not surprising. The towns of Washington, Roxbury, and Bridgewater have experienced population declines like many other districts in Connecticut, but we have noticed the trends are slightly higher. From 2007 to 2017, our enrollment declined 34.9%. So they have said that there is a possibility over the next 10 years, we are looking for a decline in our student population of approximately 160 students, but that is students from Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. This number does not include our tuition in considerations or the agri-science program enrollments. What this report does is it takes a look at certain factors and trends such as labor force, new home construction, women of childbearing age. And so noticing that some of the decisions that have been made by our region have been incredibly forward-thinking. To know that we're looking at numbers in which we're not even factoring in our agri-science program, which right now is, is looking promising for enrollment. It does not consider in our tuition in students. It does factor in some Sherman factors, but to know that as it projects out, what it's projecting out is for our residents within the town. So this information becomes very important for us as we're doing our planning, as we're looking at our school configurations, what our needs are, and how we need to potentially shift resources. One of the notable findings includes that Burnham's enrollment fluctuations is due to the success of the tuition in program. So they have seen that has altered our numbers. It should also be noted that we are recognizing, we have to watch for some of those trends as we do have some spiked birth rates that are coming up, and how that impacts who we can accept for tuition in. As we say, we, we know, we are only filling, filling the seats that are available, not creating a whole nother plane. So it is worth a read. It's, there's nothing shocking. I think you've all been able to see the writing on the wall and have been planning accordingly. Bob, did I miss anything?
It still reflects that the finding of, of my vote. It's not changing, it should be.
It's going to keep going down too.
My variation. Still. As you mentioned.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what we can do, but one of the things I've discussed with people is, our base is dying. Let's face it, the base is dying, and the Selectment Finance Committees, Planning Commissions, zoning commissions are not looking at one of the reasons why they're dying. The reason the base is dying is because of the zoning laws, which are exclusionary, the high price of housing, for which there is no effort made by the towns to purchase 30, 40, 50, 100 acres and build housing for young families, and the state compounds this. My question to us is, what kind of pressure can we put on the towns to grow the base? Because I'm not a supporter of AgSTEM, not the program, but us doing it, because it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is the base. When your base dies, you're not ever going to be able to bus in enough students to replace the base. So my question to you is, what are our options as a Board of Ed legally? What can we do to force a change in the zoning laws of the towns, the concept of buying land to build housing, jobs, et cetera, et cetera? If we don't do something as a Board, the towns don't seem to want to do anything. And if we don't put pressure, from my vantage point, the AgSTEM, which is busing in students to replace the base, could never bus in enough students to replace the base, because even if you got 200 AgSTEM students in, you wouldn't get the 50% of. you wouldn't get to 50% of capacity of the district. And when we once had over 1,000 students, we're now down under 600 of local students. This isn't going to get better unless there is an effort to change the zoning laws, create jobs, and create housing. My question is, what can we do legally as a Board of Ed to force a change in the towns' decisions to run the towns like they are? What can we do? Because if we don't do anything, we sit here. The AgSTEM program isn't going to do anything but be busing in children. And you're not going to get to 200, 300, 400. You're going to be at about max of 150, maybe do even a little better, a little less. That isn't going to solve the problem of building the base. We need to find out, what kind of pressure can we legally do to force the towns to address the underlying problem, which is housing, jobs, zoning?
Greg?
Well, Pete, I can answer your question. We can't do anything legally to force the towns to do anything about the zoning laws or any other stuff. We have one duty, and that is to educate the children of this region and provide the best education that we can. And one of the reasons why I support AgSTEM is it's more than just bringing in additional children into the district. It's creating a, a, a really wonderful program here that's going to provide opportunity for a lot of kids, including kids that are native to the district. And I think it gives us, it positions us to be a, a real, exciting 21st century school and program that might just have the salutary effect of attracting people to come here to move when they're trying to decide which of the many towns in Litchfield County, Southern Litchfield County, they might want to move to. They might want to come here to one of these three towns because we're going to have an unparalleled educational opportunity. So that's, that's the first thing I would respond to that. The second thing I would say is, is that, um, the, part of the reason why the population of the school has dropped is because we've, the demographics of this area have changed. And more and more people are moving here as second homeowners. And their children tend to be enrolled elsewhere, uh, primarily in New York and not here. And we do have, we do have five private schools in Washington. And as a result, this region has always been in that position. That we are, there's only one town in Connecticut that has a higher percentage of students in private school, and that's Greenwich. And they have a lot of private school, like they have eight private schools in Greenwich. So it's not unusual for towns with private schools, with people with a lot of disposable income, with people who are, this is a second home, for the population of school-aged children to drop. What we have to do is keep a rigorous program. That's our job. And I think AgSTEM is the right step in order to get us there. And I'm excited that we're moving in that direction. And I think we're doing the best we can, uh, to ride out the storm of fairly low enrollment right now.
Sure.
I just wanted to say, yeah, there's nothing legally we can do, but I think it would be, I think it would be a good idea to start a conversation, um, with our first selectman, right? You know, we've, we've been talking a lot about the agri-science program and, and other issues. But our towns voted to keep their schools, so they clearly want their schools. So now we need to encourage them to promote policy that allows families to populate those schools because it's a challenge for us to, to have thriving elementaries when, when we have declining enrollment. I mean, we've, we've been creative and we've done a lot of great things, but, um, the, the economies of scale are not there, and, um, it's a challenge. It's, so I, I think putting, we can't legally do anything, but we could put some pressure back on the towns to say, okay, we've got these schools that you wanted and you voted for. What are you doing to help, um, either ease the housing costs or zoning laws or, or whatever? Maybe there are other, um, factors that they are not considering, that are not allowing people to, or not encouraging people to move in. So I think it's a good point, Pete. We should, we should be putting some pressure on for them to, to be having these conversations and asking for updates on how it's going.
Ellen?
Well, that, this all presupposes that, um, we're taking at face value what Megan Trainor over here just said. All about the base.
I wouldn't say that. That would have been Pete.
Uh, that's what I mean. But, uh, it's not, the towns actually are. I, obviously I know a lot more about Bridgewater, but all the three towns are doing something. So what, what you're responding to is actually just a presumption on Pete's part that they're not doing anything. I think you get a little closer to the end of what you said, I think is a little better message to send, is that we need to ask the towns what the status is of the, of the, um, uh, policies and promotions they've put in place. Because I know that, um, Bridgewater, we changed our apartment, um, percentage zoning laws. I know that Washington has its mortgage, um, non-indemnification, however that works, that percentage of mortgage, uh, help. And I know Roxbury has done something else that I can't remember. But each town has done at least one thing and probably several. So if we are concerned, I think we need to think of it in less than putting pressure than on them legally or, or any kind of edict as to you must. And more, let's start with what are, because there are things. Because this is not as if, uh, we have three tone deaf towns. I think they're all well aware and doing things.
Oh, I just had a simple question, nothing to do with the previous conversation. But Bob, maybe you know this. The report we get from Dr. Prada, is this something that all regions in the state do? And is it something we pay for annually? How, how does it work? I just don't know.
Not all districts do this on an annual basis. Some aren't faced with some of the dilemmas that this part of the state is, uh, dealing with. It's a report that we need for both planning purposes and also for state reimbursement purposes. If we embark on any, uh, projects like we have in these two projects. We pay for it. It used to be a service that the state would provide, but they no longer do that. And that stopped probably about a dozen or so years ago. And, uh, Peter Prada is, uh, he was working for the state at the time. And we pay for, the base report is about 1350 or so. And the whole report's 19 because we took it a step further and added a demographic study just by towns. Typically, you just do it by schools. But in our case, because we wanted to see what was the trends within each town, there's a whole appendix at the back that we added to this in the last couple of years.
I'm sorry, can you repeat, how much do we pay for it?
At the end of this one, it was about $1,900.
$1,900. And do we have to get it every year, or that's our choice?
It's not necessary that you do it every year, but it's been the planning tool to understand both for staffing purposes and to right-size the district's staff to ensure that we, we've got these things covered. Because you're looking, you're trying to project out as well. I mean, we look at a budget in isolation as a year, but we're also looking at it further out than that. And this gives us those tools to do it.
Okay, thanks.
I think that was the last thing on your agenda. I, I'd like to actually ask you a question about Power School before I go back to the beginning. You, you mentioned, uh, Power School being configured now to calculate GPAs. But you said, I think in your note to the board, the seventh semester, which left me slightly confused because that's, that's the, uh, you're, you're, you're in your senior year. Most college applications have already gone out by then. So what about the other semesters? What about the other grades? What's, what's the intention there?
We currently are calculating the rolling calculation for GPAs. So what we've been doing is pulling the audits. We want to make certain that the weighted grades, everything is in. So we're doing that self-audit. Right now, Vic has it where it is calculating. So it is doing that rolling calculation. So just reporting it, the seventh semester will also help us so that way we recognize, that double-check just for the end of the, um, graduation.
Okay, so I'll try to put a finer point on it. So when our students apply to college and they're putting a digital transcript through, I think Naviance, right? That's being pulled from Power School? Does it have a GPA calculated in it? Is it Power School calculating that, or is it a hand calculation?
Power School has the ability to run the algorithm. So yes, at this point, it is going through. We will still do the audit of a handful of students to check for the GPA accuracy. But at this point, the way that we have the fields populated, it is able to pull in and do the rolling GPA.
So parents, sorry?
You were going to say asking. Oh, Vic, he's not here.
Oh, he's not here. So, so parents then at the end of, so when is, when is GPA being calculated by Power School? At the end of each semester?
It's rolling right now.
Right, at, at the end of each, obviously not in between the grading periods. So if a, if a parent logs into Power School at the end of a given semester during the, the high school, nine through 12, they should be able to see a GPA?
We don't have it through Power, not on the parent portal. They can always call to get the GPA.
Will we provide that through the parent portal at some point? Is that on the to-do list?
At this time, we want to make certain that how it's being calculated through.
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming you wouldn't do it until you're satisfied that you're actually reporting correct numbers. But once you do that, you, the parents will be able to see it through their portal?
It has the ability to do such. I would like to discuss with the CHOPOG team on how we want to.
Okay.
Communicate that. But it does have the ability, and parents always have access to that information.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, move to the next item on the agenda. Reports, so I'm up with the digital committee. We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago, I think, a very short one. But, um, hm? It was an efficient meeting, yes, thank you. But what, what we've done is, uh, we've decided to, to focus on, on policies that, um, that are digital in nature. So we went through and looked at, um, basically did a, a comparison of, um, what policies Cabe are, is currently recommending in the area of, again, data security, data privacy, HIPAA compliance, and things you'll see in a, in a, later today in, in policies, um, use of web, filtering, copyright infringements, et cetera. And went through Cabe and said, okay, these are all the policies that Cabe is recommending that touches these areas. And then we went and looked at, uh, what policies do we have? And, um, I'll say that, that we've got work to do. That there's, there, we have a couple, but, um, there's, there's a big gap in, um, in, in what we, what we need to fill. So we'll focus on filling missing policies first, if you will, rather than try to, uh, work on the ones we already have and then circle back to them. So that's what the committee's up to. So, and we'll be working, Michelle's actually on the committee, so it makes it easier. But we need to then work hand and glove with the policy committee to figure out how we. Oh, you weren't there. We were just making a list. We weren't making any decisions. And then bring them back to the board and, and a usual course of action. So, uh, who's next? Michelle?
We have not had a meeting, um, I, I don't think we have a meeting scheduled until January for Ed Advance.
Okay. Actually, I did mine in my, in the board's report, uh, and Chair's report. Michael's not here with education. Did, did the committee meeting, was, that was canceled, right? Right, Michael's request. Greg, facilities.
The facilities committee, I think I reported at the last meeting of our most recent meeting concerning the roof, uh, issues. And, uh, I'd like to actually make a, a motion tonight, um, to add to the agenda, uh, an item to direct the facilities director to solicit bids to affect repairs to the roof. CHOPOG roof is identified by the facilities committee and authorize the superintendent to approve a bid in an amount not to exceed $50,000, with funding to be from the 18, 19 facilities of building upkeep budget. The superintendent has indicated that in the event the bids exceed the authorization, then they'll report back to us and seek further, she'll report back to us and seek further direction. I think that it's, um, it's important to get this roof repair made. This is the one we identified as costing about $47,000. We originally thought it could be upwards of 70, 80 or more, but it's, it's $40,000, uh, less than $40,000. If we do not repair this roof, it will quickly get to the point where we will be forced to put a new roof on the building at a cost of about four to six million dollars, probably closer to the $6 million dollar number. If you recall, last time I presented to you an alternative that we were going to recommend to the board, and we still are recommending to the board, that the roof, uh, be refurbished in a manner that will cost about a million, just under $1,400,000, as opposed to the $6 million dollar cost of a new roof. This is a proper way to go about it. I know there's been some discussion with the, um, uh, with the, with the towns about this. And, but in, in the meantime, we need to repair the areas that are currently leaking. That's critical because if that's not done, the leakage will get worse. We've already got water coming into the building, and this can't be allowed to continue. So that, that's why I'd like to put this motion, I'd like to, to add that to the agenda.
I'm going to second to.
Okay, so a second.
Questions, Michelle?
Not about the subsequent proposal, but adding it to the agenda for discussion.
Okay, no question about adding it. We can add the topic.
So the motion is to add it to the agenda. Right, and we have several considerations. Any prior discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so it's now on the agenda. Greg, back to you.
All right, so, um, I, I think I've explained it enough.
Well, I'm, I'm curious about the motion because I don't think you need board authorization just to go out to bids. Don can always put something to bid. What, are you looking for authorization of, of spending money?
Yes, we're, we're looking for the superintendent to be able to put it out to bid. And as long as the contract comes in at 40,000 or less, the superintendent. 50,000 or less, the superintendent can award the contract because we need to do it quickly before the winter sets in.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Before we have a roof full of snow.
In accordance with policy, so she, I could just keep going and not have to come back.
Excellent. Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Bob, is this something you're okay with? Thank you.
Want to make a motion? So we need to put the motion up on the floor.
All right.
I'll move as, oh, as Greg stated before.
Second? Motion's been seconded.
I'll, I'll hand it to you.
So it's the motion to authorize the superintendent to proceed to bid to repair.
You want me to read the motion again? No, it's okay. To, to repair the roof, and as long as the bids come in under the not to exceed, shows the authority to go ahead and contract. That's effectively what the motion says. So it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion passed unanimously to, as Greg described. Thank you, Greg. Negotiations?
Oh, I did, the one, the one last thing I'll tell you about facilities is we will be moving at our next meeting, we'll be moving on to the issue of Don's budget for the upcoming, you know, his, his, his facilities items, his capital improvement costs and things that need to be incorporated in the next budget. So you should expect a report on that in a couple of meeting cycles. It's going to take a couple of nights for us to go through that.
Sorry, Stephanie, I skipped you. Finance?
Yep. So the committee met earlier this evening, and the budget's tracking normally for this point in the year at about 4.5%. I asked Bob to give us some updates on the elementary capital expenditure fund and the capital non-recurring 1%. Those numbers are currently available. The, the elementary capital expenditure fund has 100, 100, 209, $10293.19 available now. But there are some things on the list of, um, repairs and such that need to be made. And I know, the reason why I asked him to update us on that number is because I know that there are some roof repairs to be done at Washington Primary and I don't know if there was something else at Burnham, but just so we have that number available to us. The 1% fund has available funds at $800,107.60. Something interesting to note is that the interest that we're receiving on both of those accounts are not insignificant. Something that is due to Bob's work. He's got those funds and money market accounts that are liquid, and we've, we're getting.
Bring it up a little bit. From zero to something.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, uh, it's, it's nice. We've, we've got some, some decent interest that's coming back to us on both of those. So it just, you know, we, we noticed it at the committee meeting, and I thought it was interesting to note. The 2017-18 audit is very close to completion without any issues to date. The completion date is at the end of the month, and it'll be presented to the board in January. And as soon as that audit is approved, uh, we'll be able to distribute some funds to the town. And that number is also pretty. and that number is also pretty healthy. Currently, the town distributions, the preliminary numbers are $351,744, which is a significant bump from last year, which was around a little over 40,000 that was distributed between the three towns. So the selectmen and the town should be pretty happy about that number. What else here? The work is underway on the prep of the documents to secure the permanent bond rating. Bob is working with Barry Bernaby on those, and they'll be scheduling a meeting with the finance committee to review the structure and the cost implications on refinancing the existing band somewhere in January or February. And I think that is about it. Last meeting, I was asked to talk to Bob and figure out funding options for the roof repairs, restoration, all the different options. Megan and I met with the three-town selectmen on the 27th, and I think those minutes were distributed to everyone on the board. But it sounds like that's an ongoing conversation on what is going to be done, what bids we're going to be getting for all that work, so, but everything looks like we're on track there. There aren't, nothing, nothing that we can't, that we haven't figured out, so.
Julie?
Just curious, why is the number going back to the town so much higher this year? Do you know what is in that number?
Sure. When developing the budget, we develop a budget with not overly estimating the revenue that we receive. So what we didn't do was assume that all these New Milford students and Brookfield and so on and so forth, we're going to return. So we just used Sherman plus one student, because we knew the one student was definitely coming back. But we have these other students, and that generated more revenue. The expenditure side is only $3,000. So if we were flat on the revenue side, only $3,000 would be returned. It's primarily from this additional revenue over the budgeted amount. The one thing you never want to do is promise you're going to get a lot of revenue, and then it doesn't come through, and you're going to have to make it up through your expenditure, and that's not a good situation.
Does that answer? Okay.
Greg, negotiations.
Thanks, Bob. Yes, we are currently in negotiations with the union representing the administrators and the union representing the paraprofessionals and clerical employees. And I believe our next meeting with the paraprofessionals union is not for a while, I think it's in January. And the next meeting with the union for the administrators is on the 18th of this month. So that's the status.
Policy? I'm sorry, Jim.
Greg, what time's the meeting on the 18th?
That's a mediation session, and it's at 11:00 AM. It's the only time they were available, the mediator was available.
What time is that?
18, 18 December.
11 o'clock.
It's Tuesday.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Michelle?
The policy committee met, and I won't go into the details, because we're going to be talking about several policies on the agenda. We have a large docket of things, policies to consider based on the legislation that was passed in the last session. CAPE has just gotten through their reworks of the policies, so we have quite a bit to do just to keep us up to date. And the only thing I would caution you about, Anthony, is that when looking at everything CAPE has, that they have a lot, they have policy options for a lot more than what is actually required. And if they've been asked by a district to write something, they will, and then they'll put it into their policy book, so we just have to be careful. We don't want to have too many policies, because then every time something changes, we have to go back. It's a lot to keep updated. So every time, and you'll see this on our agenda, something changes with the state, we have to fix it in three different places, so just a caution on having too much policy.
Got it. Okay, Megan?
All right, our standing agri-science update. We have been working, Tony Van Grove and I are meeting on Wednesday, so we can see a new logo. He's excited to present it, I'm excited to see it. But what I'm even more excited to present, tomorrow, Lori Travato and I are presenting at the Newtown Board of Education. They want to see, as a board, things that we have, what we're talking about with our agri-science program. And what we constantly are sharing with people is, it's not just the agri-science program, it's the Chapag experience. And so Colin Sullivan, who continues to work his magic and showcase our school in just a magnificent way, and just highlight all of the things our students do, has put together our first of our promotional videos. So we're going to do a three-part series. The first one is the student experience, we're going to be doing one about the parent experience, and we're going to do one about agri-science. So we're very excited, so without further ado, we will have Colin showcase his work.
When I think of Chapag, I think of community. I mean, we're just one big family here, and everyone has a chance here, and everyone will get their best shot.
All the teachers are super into what they do. The classes are so interesting, and you can choose your own path in school.
I feel like when I went to Chapag, I got more like self-confidence, a lot more. I just feel like I almost upgraded myself, and I feel like a better person.
If everybody is helpful, there's people who don't want you to fail. Nobody here wants you to fail. For me, this school has given me growth to have a goal in life.
I really like the experiences that Chapag has brought me. I recently just went to New York with my video club. We were entered in the All-American Film Fest, and feel like you get a lot of different opportunities that you couldn't get at other schools.
Well, what the Chapag experience means to me is that everybody gets part in everything. I get to do the things I love, and when I need it, I can go get help either before or after school.
The Chapag experience is all about community. There's always people there to help you if you have questions, and you can feel comfortable going to any teacher, because everybody's looking to help each other succeed.
I think that the Chapag experience to me is just having that opportunity to kind of grow your interests and develop as a person, as you do those activities that pertain to your interests, and kind of just figure out who you are.
I like that we're kind of like a smaller community. The camaraderie with like your teammates or your classmates is closer, get to know more people on like a more personal level. I just think it's a good community to have, it's a learning environment, if there's so much available to you.
I like having teachers that I can have great relationships with. Classes are rigorous, but teachers help you along the way.
Chapag experience has been all about finding creative ways to solve problems to me.
Like how small our classes are, it really feels like you're getting taught kind of as an individual and not just as like a class.
The Chapag experience, a sense of community, teachers who love what they do, opportunities to grow, camaraderie, help along the way, a place where lifelong learners are made. Is it any wonder why I love to lead Chapag Valley School?
You did amazing. So the other piece of good news is our sending schools for the agri-science are willing to put up a link to our school, so we can certainly showcase some of these things as we get them to applications and develop an understanding of what are the course offerings that we have. So I'm very excited about this. I think it's really testament to everything that you've grown for the program for these students, so kudos to the Board of Education. We have received our first applications for the agri-science program. We are requesting our sending towns do let us know the application numbers in advance of Christmas break, because I want to enjoy Christmas break. And as I had noted, in our eighth graders going into freshman year, we had a surge in attendance in our open house. And I think what the parents of the sending towns got to see was, it became standing room only. Our staff members got up and found chairs, gave up their own chairs to make certain that everybody there felt welcome, felt part of the Chapag community. It was just, it was a testament to everything that the school is, so it was just absolutely wonderful. So I'm feeling really positive about things.
Jim?
Is this the Newtown Board of Education's first presentation?
To a board of education?
To the entire board of education, yes. I've been meeting with some of the board of education members with their superintendents, but this will be the first presentation. Lori Travato and I are both going together.
Yeah, good luck.
When is that, Megan? When is that?
Tomorrow, at 7:30.
Good luck.
I can't get enough of board meetings.
Any other questions? Bob, why don't you do the financial status next, so we can link the next two gen RMs? Thank you.
Absolutely. As of the last meeting of the building committee, we have spent to date $3,023,578. It's made up of both the referendum costs of 224, 229, with project costs that we've expended at this point of $2,799,348. We received last meeting the guaranteed maximum price, and I think Greg has that number in front of him to report on. So I think that's the important number you're looking for.
Greg?
Thank you, Bob. Yes, as we said last time, we have a guaranteed maximum price for construction of some $29,614,675, along with our soft costs, which are not included in the construction budget, things like design, traffic engineering, furniture fixture, equipment, that kind of thing. That adds another $4,762,736 for a total project cost of $34,377,411. That includes two contingencies, one by the general, by the construction manager of $1,108,000 approximately, there's a couple of pennies in there, and a contingency that we're holding of about $544,000. And so we're about, that makes us about $1,006,000 change below budget. And if we don't spend those contingencies, we will have another $1,600,000 available, and we hope to be able to put back on the list a number of the items that we had left off when we were concerned about keeping the cost in line with projections. But that's where we are now. We had our first change order, I think I may have mentioned last time. The first change order reduced the price of the job by $60,000. So that's included in the numbers I just gave you, so that's where we are. We added that. Every change order that reduced the cost will add to our owner's contingency. Every change order that increases the cost will take away from it. So we're trying to hold those contingencies as close as we can, and so that we can bring this job in on budget and be able to do all the things we'd like to do. So that's more or less where it is right now, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the guaranteed maximum price, or the cost of the job, or what's included in it and what's not. I know we talked last time a little bit about some ad alts, and I'd be happy to address those. The job as bid with that guaranteed maximum price currently includes the following items. One of them is the replacement of an athletic field that is unfortunately involved in the footprint of one of our buildings. It's a practice soccer field, and that's being replaced and moved to the upper soccer field. And that's at a cost of $320,000. North parking lot improvements, this is to take the parking lot, tear it up, the north parking lot, and actually put a base under it for the first time in its history, and redo that lot. That's about $330,900. We've got some, an area that we had taken off of the main parking lot out front that was going to be expanded, and we were going to take part of it back and gravel it rather than pave it. Well, we've put the paving back into the budget at $35,000. And the north parking lot and entry lighting, we've done some upgrades to the lighting that we wanted to put in the contract, into the deal. We took them out, and now they're back in to the tune of $98,500. And finally, there's duck-worked air return. This is the air return on the north side of the building that serves the graphics and robotics labs. That's $3,825, and that's definitely in the contract, because the work's been done. So that's definitely in. So those items are included in the price. There were several items not included in the price, and I'd like to go over those. One of them is air conditioning of the darkroom and planning area. This is that...
Greg, before you go there, just kind of chunk this down. Jim, I think, had a question on the beginning part, no?
No, I didn't. Okay. Yeah, so if anybody has a particular question about the beginning part, I'd like to get through it all, and then we can come back to talk about why we prioritize things the way we have.
That's fine, I thought Jim had a question.
Okay. We had, there's an air conditioning of the darkroom and planning area that's going to cost $40,377. We had taken that out because there were some issues with it, but that will probably be added in, assuming we have funds to do it, which we expect to have, as I've told you, with our contingencies. We also have some north parking lot entry drive lighting of $113,500. This is to basically have light poles that are all the same height. We have existing light poles of 25 feet, that's not permitted in Washington anymore. They're maximum out at 15 feet. If you go 15-foot lights, you need more of them, so that's why it adds $113,500. We're keeping that off to the side. We've rejected it, we're not necessarily going forward with that, not a high priority. The air conditioning of that north end is a high priority. The next items are pending alternates. These are alternates that we have not rejected, but we're seriously considering going forward with. And of the four items, one of them is a high priority. We have some interior wall finishes on the equine garage animal facility. It's about $43,580, and that's to do upgraded interior wall surfaces. We have an outdoor storage pavilion. This is actually taking the area that we store mulch and other things they use in the landscaping portion of the curriculum, and it's putting a cover over it, basically, and that's $95,535. We've got an outdoor equine riding ring, which was deleted from the original proposal. They're going to grade it and leave us with the surface, and that's $280,000. That's a high priority for us to put back in if we can. And then there's some thermoplastic membrane roofing, which is a slight upgrade on a small portion of the roof at $15,300, which we may or may not do, depending on how the roofing issue comes out. One of the things, I want to talk a little bit about the outdoor equine riding ring. One of the things we did tonight, and I'm looking for my minutes, is we got some information on what that project consists of. And what it consists of are several major subparts. Now, if you did only part of these, it would end up costing you more, because the prices are based on doing the whole piece. But there's subsurface work. This is installing drainage under the riding ring area. And so it's things related to underlayment and drainage, and that's about $18,000, a lot less than I thought it would be. Then there's the surface preparation and the footing material, and that's about $109,000 of that. Then there's fencing, and that surface prep also includes grubbing and landscaping work. Then there's fencing and that kind of thing, fencing and gates of $93,000. And finally, miscellaneous things like bleachers, walkways, and hydrants and things like that of about $60,000. So that's a project that if, for whatever reason, we were only able to do part of it, we could do part of it and then finish the other part later. But what we're thinking is, is that assuming we do not have major drags on our contingency, this is, this and the air conditioning are the two things we'd want to put back in first. And our expectation is, is that we will be able to do this. We're hoping we should be able to get this back into the budget and make this a reality. One of the things that we consider when we look at these things is to whether to put them in, and whether to have them as ad alts, and whether to not do them. We look at things like, all of these are legitimate projects, because they've either, like in the case of the athletic fields, we have taken over an athletic field for an Agstem building, so we need to replace that field. And so that will be replaced with the state contributing 80% of the cost. The same thing with the outdoor equine riding ring. That, if we can get that into the project, we'll get state reimbursement of 80%. The difficulty is, we really can't go above the $34 million number I gave you earlier, or beyond that, the state's not going to want to reimburse.
So Greg, we went through this, and I appreciate you bringing us through it again. We went through it last week, last board meeting, and we said that the... Last board meeting and we said that the, the decisions ultimately on the alt ad list, depending upon the nature of, of the item, like something that's programmatic like the riding ring versus the finish on an interior wall, uh, some of these things warrant board approval. So we have this on the agenda tonight to discuss, uh, at least one of these items. A list of what Greg just described was emailed to everybody about two seconds ago or five seconds ago. You probably have a count of copy from me and, and from Megan. So you can take a look at it, uh, as we, uh, as we get into these discussions. Got you. No, no, we're, we've, we've got it on the agenda tonight because I think the board needs to give the building committee its opinion, uh, because if we don't make these decisions, we're going to lose the window. So, so a decision was made and this is what we're getting at and, um, and I'd like to hear what the superintendent's opinion is as well, is a decision was made to, uh, to not put the riding ring, which is a feature of the Ag, the Ag program.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Um, and I, I don't believe the board discussed it or decided how important it was or wasn't. And I think for something as, as significant as this, is the board needs to, needs to speak.
Okay.
So I'd like to put it, uh, and, and because there are varying opinions as to whether or not, where, where we should be putting the emphasis. So for example, we have a soccer field below us, uh, on the other side of, of the road that could be used, uh, when there's a scheduling issue. Um, you know, was that thought about? Um, was it considered? I believe it was, but, but again, why did we come to the conclusion that this is where we want to spend our money versus taking a feature, um, off the agenda? So, um, I think that's probably the best place to start and I'd like to hear first from, from Megan, you and your team regarding the rink and the athletic field.
If, I'm sorry, just, just so I understand, are you saying that, uh, if the rink is approved, the athletic field will not be able to be-
That's correct. Right now, the only thing that we have budget for is for the replacement of the practice field that was disrupted because of the AgSTEM program.
Okay.
Right? If we, if we, if the program comes on, comes on budget and, and we consume the contingency, and right now I think we should assume that we're probably going to consume that contingency, we will have this, we will start this program without a riding ring. And we'd have to circle back at some other point in time and, and do it if we decide to do it.
That's not entirely true. You will have an indoor riding ring. You will not have an outdoor-
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about the feature of an outdoor riding ring. I know we'll have an indoor one, but we, we originally planned to-
You won't have a completed one?
Yeah. I mean, when we approved the program, we approved an outdoor riding ring and an indoor riding ring. We no longer have the outdoor riding ring as of right now.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Megan? Absolutely. Matt, come, enlighten us.
Well, I can tell you-
We need, we need you, we need you to speak at the bottom.
Yeah.
It's a very formal bunch here.
Is this on? As, as far as soccer field versus riding rink, that's, that's you guys. I can tell you why we need that, that soccer field. We have six teams right now, uh, that play soccer and, and we have two fields plus a, a practice space. Um, and as you know, there's going to be a building and a facility is going to be right there taking up that practice space. So, um, right off the bat, there's 16 times a year where we're going to have home soccer games, um, here. And, uh, the potential during those home soccer games, if our opponents have varsity and JV, um, is, uh, the middle school will have nowhere to practice, uh, here on campus. Um, there's, uh, also, so there's 16 home high school soccer games and, uh, there are 12 home middle school soccer games. Generally, we don't run into an issue with middle school because I'm able to, to schedule, uh, uh, one team plays at home while the other team plays away, um, which leaves us one of our two fields open for the high school to practice. Um, so the big issue is during those 16 dates, where does the middle school practice if we don't have a field, uh, for them here on campus? Could you go across the street there? Yeah, you, you could. It's, it's not a good facility and you're, you're taking 30 to 35 middle school kids and either walking them down the septic path there, um, to go down there or they have to go out on the road. It's just not an optimal situation to have them across the street besides the fact that, um, that field is, uh, it's, it's not a very, uh, high quality field over there. Now, uh, I'll be honest, the, the practice spot that they practice on during those games, it's nothing spectacular either. Um, you know, it's, it's just kind of an area that's, that's flat, uh, that has space and we, we, we bring these portable goals and we put them up there. Um, but there is a need for a space for these teams to practice with, I mean, you can do the math, you have six teams and you have, uh, two fields without any other practice space. You know, you, you need, you need to be able to go somewhere. So.
So.
I have two, two questions. I'm wondering, um, how it came to be that soccer has two fields for six teams and field hockey has two fields for two teams?
Well, I came here in 1993 and that had been well established well before I got here.
Okay. It's just, not that I want to take anything from field hockey, but there's definitely space out, space out that direction towards the field hockey, middle school baseball.
Well, it's the field hockey fields. I mean, you have a middle school field hockey field and a high school field hockey field. So if you were to take that middle school field hockey field and make that into a soccer field, we have a very similar situation. And you can't practice middle school field hockey down, down across the street on South Street. I mean, that would, that would be-
Yeah. No, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the, the spaces we have, trying to avoid going across the street. And if there was a game-
Yeah, I don't blame you.
So if there was a game, um, going on, on the upper field-
Mm-hmm.
Is there enough space next to the field up there to practice? Currently, I know there's a lot of space up there.
Not as it's currently configured, no. Uh-uh.
Is there, is there, because I know the plan is to put another field up there.
Right.
And by building out the corner or something, because it's too sloppy.
It's to turn them too. It's, it's to orient them, uh, in a different way.
Okay. But so the, the concern is not having a practice next to a game? It's just that there's not enough space right now to practice up there if there is a game?
There's, there's not, yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't do both right. Right now, if you tried to run, have any type of practice, you, you could not do that. There's, there's just not, not, not room up there right now, the way it is.
Okay.
Alan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confused about how this, this map, which shows the new layout corresponds to what we have now. Uh, if this is the tennis courts here, then you have one field hockey here. I know, I didn't blow it up for you, sir. Um, one field-
That map is not going to help you understand that you need to see the site plan.
Well, I'm just trying to go by what we have now from our building.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have field hockey here, right? Tennis courts.
That's, right, 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 there is, uh, varsity field hockey, right there is middle school field hockey.
Right.
Right now, this is the area that we practice in. And then up here in that picture, uh, the upper soccer field.
But where's the tri, the tree line is about here?
Uh, yes, you can see it's going right there, so.
Yeah, so is there practice space in here? Because we see things, I only, I'm asking is when I walk up to this field, very often they're practicing right in front of me. So that's why I'm wondering if there's not practice space right in here.
Well, yeah, yes, it's right here.
So you're losing, is there room to practice up here?
Not really, no. Not, not if you're playing field hockey right there. And plus, there's an infield of baseballs right there.
Yeah. Well, I guess my other question then too is that we have that lower field, what do we use it for?
Well, we don't use it.
We're not.
That's never been our field.
Uh-huh.
It's never been a Chapag field.
At some point, Chapag Soccer Club decided they wanted to use that because they didn't have any fields.
Right.
They created some makeshift fields there. I, I don't know that there's ever been an actual, um, regulation, uh, 110 by 65, uh, yard field down there. I'm not sure if it would fit that or not. There, there've been various incarnations. There's been two fields, sometimes they're perpendicular to one another, sometimes one, they, they go, uh, end to end, depends on what youth groups they have. And it's usually, uh, it's smaller fields down there that aren't, that aren't as big. But at, at some point, I don't know if it's within the last 20 years or so, Chapag Soccer Club decided, you know, we can probably stick some fields there and they've been renting it for $1 a year from, uh, the region and doing their own maintenance on it. Um, I don't know if we've gotten those dollars for the last couple of years and they owe us about, you know, five.
Well, that's what I meant, because I know I was down there a lot with my son when he, he was doing elementary rec soccer and things like that. Um, but it always said Chapag lower field, so I assumed it was a field.
That was, no, that, that was not us. They kind of co-opted that name and they put that up there, yeah.
But I, I guess, I guess my question is if we own that property and if there is a way to carve out a full-size field and to, um, uh, level it and make sure it's a, it's a good surface, although I know the middle school field is quite swampy now, so good is in the eye of the beholder, I guess. But if that is possible, what the cost difference would be?
I mean, I would ask Don some of that because that's our-
It's not po, it's not possible. We've, we've talked about it.
It's a complete wetland down there, it's-
So you've talked about whether there's a cost differential between, uh, the, the cost of, oh, my screen's gone. 320 for the, um, athletic field in one place to the riding ring in the other place, if they can, we can have both of those by, not refurbishing, but somehow upgrading that field, the lower field. But you're saying, Greg, that you've looked or Don, that you've looked and it's, there's not enough space there? Is that the problem? Or the condition of the ground?
I think you'll find, and Don, correct me, I think what you'll find is, is that the minute you start to get out beyond the parameters of what's an existing field, you get immediately into wetlands and you can't fill those wetlands and you'd need to fill them in order to do this. The other thing, don't forget, is you're sitting, you're playing on top of our septic system. That's our septic field over there.
That lower field is our septic field?
That lower field is our septic field, yes.
Wow.
So there's a limit.
I'm surprised you've gone to games and not noticed that, Alan. I just-
It's the opposing team that's staying. I didn't know.
His sniffer's not so good.
Sweaty kids.
Well, well, well played, is all I can say. But no, the, the difficulty is, is it's a very challenging environment. You can't expand what's there. You can't do much with what you've got and it's not an ideal field.
Hmm, alright.
And so, and you wouldn't want to put a lot of work into that field for fear of disturbing the septic system underneath it. So it, it, it's a real poor alternative for us, uh, you know, with a high school that we, we think is pretty good. And so that, that's why we were, we were told that that field really wasn't the solution. And therefore we went into figuring out, how could we get that athletic field done? Um, because it's not an easy thing to fund any other way and paid for 80% by the state. We just happened to be lucky that it had to be relocated.
Well, I would say then that without this riding rink, um, the program suffers and therefore adding an outdoor riding rink, ring, um, and who knows? That's, we, we have, we could put exhibitions, uh, seating in there and, um, stands and that would be close to a million dollars and quite a good enhancement to the program. And maybe the D-bolds would like to consider that their enhancement. Have we talked about that at all? I mean, it's a very standalone-
No, no, we haven't, but remember, the board approved the program that had a list of features.
And that was one.
And a feature was taken off the list without board reapproving it. That's what we're here to talk about today. So we can go back and ask if the, if the, if D-bolds are, are interested in this. We have no idea whether or not they are or aren't. Uh, but the cost of adding it is 280,000. You know, uh, this, the, the practice field was in fact displaced by the animal facility, so it legitimately should be replaced, however the state has capped how much money. And, and we're basically looking at, if we want to do both right now and we spend 100% of the contingencies, ours and theirs, we're basically authorizing, would be authorizing, an additional $280,000 against the referendum that was approved. Now, the referendum was approved to do the Ag program. So it's not like it's, it's completely out of bounds for, uh, for, uh, for potential use. So the, we, the money's there if we decide to go above and beyond. Now, if we, if we don't spend contingency and we can put it against that, then obviously we won't broach the, uh, the, uh, the cap that the state has given us. And this riding ring, like this, like the field, is also subjected to 80%. It's a legitimate cost that was approved by the state. So we're, we're, we're looking at, we, we have a choice to make. So Pete?
From my vantage point, uh, we don't know how many students are going to show up for AgSTEM. We have no idea. No one knows who's going to, my belief is that if we got to 140, it'll be a miracle, an absolute miracle. And I realize that the superintendent, Mrs. DeBrito, and the lady running the program have done a great, great job. I commend them for it. They may be very, very successful, but based on the numbers I look at and what we've seen from the past, I can't see spending money for an outdoor riding rink until we know the program is really successful and you can make a case for spending that money to build the riding rink.
Well, I would ask you this, Pete. How do we know not having it, what the impact is going to be? Because it was designed that way to begin with.
You can't prove that. You can't prove that.
And you can't prove the other.
That's right, and that's what I'm saying. Therefore, I would not replace, I would not replace that, replace the soccer fields with that, Anthony. I think you'll get more, you'll get more pushback from the public. And, and I really believe that. You'll get pushback from the public big time if you put a riding rink. A riding rink in outdoor-
It was approved, Pete.
What are we running? A, a program for the elite?
Pete, it was approved. It was a program feature, it was approved.
So that doesn't mean you have to do it.
Well, we, we can not put the animal facility there too and save even more money.
Right.
And get to where you really want to go, which has killed the program. So that's, that's not what, that's not the agenda.
I don't have enough, I don't have enough proof to kill it and I'm not against it. What I'm saying is, and I said to you, that is, AgSTEM is not the problem and doesn't solve the problem. And for some reason, people can't get it through their head that the problem is the base is dying.
Okay, we're, we're on, we're on the-
You're hoping that this is going to help fill some of the missing base that isn't there. That's what everybody's hoping.
I understand, but that's not the question on the table. It's about the alt ads.
Okay, the question is, well, my answer is, I think you'll do more harm to the budgetary process from a public relations standpoint if you replace the soccer fields with an outdoor riding rink when the program hasn't proved its success.
Okay.
That's my honest-
Shell?
Um, I have a, uh, I think, I guess it's sort of a financial question and timing. So if we approve as a board to move the ring back in to the program, recognizing it could be an additional cost, but so that, that for planning purposes, we're authorizing it. And then as the project goes forward and the contingency either stays or doesn't stay or remains, um, let's say we're able to get most of it within the project, like 200,000, let's just, Bob, I, I don't know if this is a question for you, but would we then be eligible for the 80% reimbursement on, on the part of the project that we were able to pull in under the cap?
I believe you would have to, the way, the way they, they have it without fully completing it is still eligible for what you're doing. If you're, if you're saying, well, I'm only going to put up three quarters of the fence or I'm only going to put up-
No, no, what I'm saying is, is actually-
To meet the dollar amount, I don't believe the state will reimburse you for that because you didn't complete the whole thing.
No, I'm talking about completing the projects. But, so what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do here is put both, both projects in, knowing, you know, acknowledging as a board that, that the 280 might exceed the original guaranteed maximum.[1751.11] guaranteed maximum. It's not actually the guaranteed maximum price we're as concerned about as the state's cap on what they'll reimburse. So let's say, so so we're authorizing that.
They're not going to, they're not going to support it.
Well.
Except, wait, but the second part of that was except for that, that's assuming we use up the entire contingency, so we, which we won't know until we get really close to the end.
That's not true. I mean, I I've said this before, the 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 biggest driver of our contingency, there are two different contingencies. And the one that's half a million, call it five, 544, call it 550 for round numbers. Our contingency is driven by unexpected things we encounter when we dig in the ground. That's where most of it's going to come. We're not going to have too many unexpected things when it comes to the new construction that's going on. Pretty much, if we were going to have unexpected things in the building, we would have found them when we were doing the demolition. So the real question is, when they go to dig the foundation holes for the for the north addition, for the greenhouse and for the 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 animal building, when they go to dig those foundation holes, if they hit ledge or they find some other condition or they hit a, they find a big pipe in the ground that nobody knew was there and it does something important. If if those things occur, now we've got potential extra costs to deal with it. If it's ledge, they've got to blast. If it's, if it's a pipe, they've got to relocate it. So you see, you have potential extra cost. Once we've gotten past the foundation stage, which is going to happen between now and the spring, we should pretty much know that we, it's not likely we're going to spend a lot of of that, of our contingency. ONG's contingency, a million 108,000, is to protect them against the things that they that that were messed up in the budget, in the in the process of bidding. For example, someone bids something, but it doesn't quite work out and they didn't, they didn't bid one other thing or something didn't get, you know, they misinterpreted something and they end up with a problem. We've got to keep building. We can't wait. We'll have to sort that stuff out later. But there may be things in which, and they need to protect themselves on their price against. Their their number is going to, their risk is going to get smaller and smaller as the project, more of it's completed. Our risk is going to, they're telling me our risk is going to decrease fairly much after we are out of the ground, after we've dug the ground. So I think there's a possibility that we could get that money in. Now, we do, we have no deadline on us on when to start that riding ring, except the time it takes to finish it before school opens or or maybe it comes online during the first semester. But we don't have a time limit on that. If we were going to eliminate the athletic field, we'd have to do that by January 2nd. Otherwise, we've we've bought it. So that's.
Oh, I think that answers my question a little bit because I was concerned about timing and needing to know for groundwork that both, both things are in. But if you're saying that by leaving the athletic field in, the site work will get done and that the site work for the ring is already in anyway?
No, I think last time, Greg, you mentioned that the ring needs drainage work that has to be done now. It's not just leveling the, at the end, leveling it off and putting up fencing, that there's underground drainage.
But didn't you say you put that back in?
$18,000 worth of underground drainage that has to be done. Everything else is top up. For example, that's why I gave you these details. The surface prep, you're not doing that till the very end. And that's, that's where most of the money in this is, 109,000.
And the 18,000 for the drainage was put back in?
No, the 18,000 for the drainage is not put back in, but we could easily put it back in. I don't see, I wouldn't have a problem putting the 18,000 for drainage in and having it bid.
My bottom line is I want them both. All right? And so I'm just trying to figure out how to get the, and I want state reimbursement on both. All right? Because they were both promised in the project. So I just want to know the order and the sequence of that we need to make these decisions so as to not cost more later because we didn't do the site work or the prep work and knowing that we have to put the bore, you know, that we're going on the line saying, look, we want them both, even if we eat up all of our contingency.
Right.
But we're not expecting to. And we'll know more about that in the spring and we could maybe then at that point make further.
Well, what, yeah, one of the reasons why you appoint a building committee is you appoint a building committee to make these nuanced decisions. And what we decided is, is number one, if you're going to do, if you're going to do the athletic, the athletic field is almost all grading. Most of that cost of that $320,000, my guess is somewhere around 220,000 or more, maybe 250,000 is just grading. That's moving dirt around with machines. Okay? And and so on, on something like that, the time to do that is the same time you want to grade the area where the riding ring is going to go. You want all that grading to be done while they're, while the people with the machines are on site doing the grading work.
Yeah.
Okay? So you do all of those things when you're going to do them. The reason on the riding ring, it's easier to break out the riding ring into components because if you ran out of money and if you were going to be done with the 80% before you finished the riding ring, what I was told by the principal is that certain of this work could be done under the auspices of the Ag STEM program. For example, the, the, some of the surface preparation work, most of that, the fencing and gates can all be done as part of the Ag STEM program. So there was a backup plan that if we couldn't get this fully funded by the state, we could, we could basically add the labor to the, to the, to the thing.
Greg.
Funding only materials.
I think it's a good time.
However, I don't think we're going to come to that. But that's the way it was originally presented to us because we asked, we asked the people planning the program, which would you rather have us focus on? Which would you rather have us do first? Because you need to do the site work in the beginning. And the answer was the athletic field moving. That's important. We can, we believe we can get the the riding ring done. And the other thing that that was impacting our decision is, is if we ended up having to to get that funded and the state wasn't, the state was not willing to go anymore and we had exceeded our 80%, we were at the end of that, we felt that the riding ring was far easier to finance through a contribution plan or through a a effort to raise money for it than any other thing in the project. It was the number one thing that you can probably get 100% reimbursement from donations. And therefore, we felt that if you were going to take any risk, it made more sense to to take that out of the project, but have it sitting right next to the door of the project to put it back in as soon as you had confidence you had your money. And the other thing to remember is, is that the work that needs to be done early on is 18,000 of the $320,000.
So Greg, just, I will take exception to how you characterize this particular decision as nuanced. I personally don't believe that this is a nuanced decision. The the $3,000 for the duck work, that's nuanced. You know, the interior walls for 30 something, that's nuanced, in my opinion. So I think this is a rather big one because it was a material item to what the board approved. Now, I appreciate the work. I'm sure the board, speak for the board here, appreciates the work that the building committee and the hours, countless hours that you guys have put into this, this project and the thought. And that, that's not what's at, at being debated right now. What's being debated is that the people who gave their opinions, I think, one, didn't come back to the board for something that's material. And and two, we also have a new administration. And I think it's probably a good time for you to to jump in here and share with the board what you think about all this since it's your program and, you know.
Happy to. I can tell you, when I first saw the soccer field improvement, I was very against because it looked like it was an enhancement. And I had a really hard time thinking about, here we're doing an agri-science program and the soccer field's coming above the riding rink, which is part of the program. That being said, as I had the conversation, it's not an improvement, it was a replacement. And that started to shift some of my thinking. I do think it is a wonderful, a wonderful asset to have an outdoor riding rink. I think that's a, we have a lot of students. One of the things that's going to set us apart from what Nanawog was is that we have equestrian and they're more bovine. And so it was to have this riding rink. But that said, I also have, and as I'm thinking and going through, listening to the comments, I have a really hard time, our students are losing something. And that's that thing where we have to say, we can't lose sight of the fact that these are our Chippagod kids and not trying to take from them to give to other students. So at this time, I do into a soccer field replacement, not an improvement, a replacement of something that is changing. So just so you know, that's what swayed my thought.
John. Sorry, John knows.
Yeah, just to muddy the waters a little further.
Go ahead, please.
Something else that has been displaced and needs to be replaced is the facilities garage. And early on, I remember attending a building committee meetings that had the, the facilities garage, storage garage in the, in the budget. And somehow that fell off the radar. We have, you know, all of the trucks that plows, the sanders, all of the gasoline-powered mowers and snow throwers, et cetera. Don could probably elaborate. That is going to be stored outside indefinitely unless we get a place to put it all. And I think if we're considering, you know, the displacement of the soccer field, we also need to consider just equally the, the replacement of the facility storage.
Was that featured in the approved program, Greg? I know it was, at some point, it was on a drawing.
It was in the program originally. If if you recall, this is one thing people may have forgotten because again, I don't, I don't mean to to say that that what we're talking about here is nuanced. I'll tell you how fine the nuance was. It was when we sat down with the engineers on this project after they did the the construction documents phase of the project and they told us that, boy, we're a little worried here that your project's running about $5 million over budget. And then they, they knocked that down to 3.8 million and then we took out the pencils and did value engineering. And a lot of things fell off the table, like the outdoor riding rink. We didn't pull the outdoor riding rink and the athletic field replacement and the north parking lot improvements out of here because we were injudicious. We did it because we were facing the project not having enough money to be built. And so we had to value engineer it and some things had to fall off the the schedule. In the process of bidding, we were able to get five of these things back in the project and we've got seven of the, or one, two, three, four, five, six of these things that are not in the project. Okay?
So.
But but they're right next to the project and we could put them in if we have enough money. And that's what we did. So we literally erased a large potential deficit by redoing how we were going to do the project, by changing materials. We saved over a million dollars on the EGAF building by going to a different type of building. And we did a lot of things like that in order to make this program fly and keep it on budget, back to a little under budget.
The question on the table was whether or not the the garage was in the scope that was ultimately approved at the last final revision.
No, it's not in the, it's not in there and if we put the garage in, we're probably going to have to pay for that garage.
Right. So even, even if we could put it in and and because with contingencies or whatever, what you're saying is since it's not part of the scope, it's not going to be subject to state reimbursement.
Well, it may not be subject to the the 80% state.
That's what I'm saying. That's the point because it wasn't part of the approved program. So, Alan.
Well, having heard all that and with Matt still patiently standing up there, I think, you know, as I said, I'm only familiar with the practice spaces that exist now from walking through it to get to games up on the, in the field on the hill. And it really is, it's not so great either. And it's, it's not, it's, I don't think it's level. It's kind of patchy. The size of it is, you know, mutates depending on how much, how official they want to get about it. Sometimes they take a little bit. So I'm really thinking that the way through this, at least to see if we need to have some fundraising in the future, is to do the practicing, not, not move any kind of game fields, do the practicing on that lower field. Because it can't be much, it can be worse, but I've seen plenty of elementary school games on that too. It can't be much worse than the real makeshift practice field. And being on soccer teams myself, you always run before a soccer game for, I mean, soccer practice to warm up. That's where they can run to, to get down there. And if it's high school, they're not as, not as dangerous as sending, you know, sixth graders down there. I think that could be the solution to this because I'm sure that can be worked a lot cheaper than the fill that's going to be needed to turn the middle school soccer field into a practice and soccer field. Now, having said that, you know, I don't want to be wrong, so I think someone should look into that quickly to find out exactly what it would take to make the lower field usable. And knowing that it needs something, and if that comes in at, you know, 20,000, then there's your, our solution. Because I do agree with, with Anthony that the, the riding ring was part of the package and is a very attractive part of the package. And we don't know how much, you know, in this whole debate about whether it's good or bad to, you know, how we influence the public. We don't know how much harder our attempt to populate this program will be if we don't have it. So I'm for keeping the riding ring, putting the riding ring back in or keeping it however the word goes and and doing a little quick assessment as to whether we can have the practice down at the lower field until we come to any other decisions on money for these things in the future.
John.
So I'm in the same pool as Michelle. I want both. I actually don't think the lower field is a really great field and I don't love the idea of it being on the septic. So for me, I just, and we spent a lot of time down there and it's, it's just not something that I think is a great idea. I also too, as Don knows, walk up to the lower, the upper field makes me crazy when it gets wet and muddy and, but I also was told by Don that it's not going to be a lot to fix the mud in the little gap up there. So, because he knows that I'm on them all the time about it. So he's been waiting for this to happen, to hopefully fix that. And I believe him. So, but I appreciate what Megan said about enhancement versus an addition or enhancement and what was the other word? Thank you. Losing my mind. Because I think that we're replacing something. I think an enhancement, which I am going to say to muddy the waters a little bit because for me personally, before we get, and I am also in support of the outside, outdoor ring, that's the other part, because I too feel that it was a really important part of the piece. And I think that that was a discussion the board would need to have to decide to take it out and not the building committee. So I agree with Anthony on that. So I'm in favor of both. But if we are going to have a nice little section for people to sit for this horse ring, I'm going to fight you on that because I think we need that for the athletic field first. So the enhancement I want for the replacement is to have seating for games before we do for the horse ring. So there we go.
Julie.
Well, likely I think we all want both, so hopefully that can happen. But I also wrote, don't really know what our horse program is all about and I've sort of asked a few times and maybe we don't know yet what it's all about. I do know anecdotally that the kids are very, very excited about the idea of having a riding program. And my family owns a horse farm and I can't imagine having a riding program without an outdoor ring. I think that would be a big mistake. But on the other hand, you don't want to have an outdoor ring and have it sit empty. So are we going to have partnerships with other farms? Are we going to have horses here on site that are ridden regularly? I don't know. Maybe you guys do, but I don't. But anyway, I, if we are going to have a robust riding program, I think for sure we have to have an outdoor ring.
Jim?
I was going to ask you if you would be amenable to a vote on an $18,000 at the present or to do whatever the site work is necessary for the underlayment. Would that be satisfactory to you?
I'd like to hold off on that for just, till debates finish.
Okay.
Because I, I think it's important, I know.
I'd like to hear your thoughts about it.
I kind of know where you.
I'd like to hear your thoughts about it.
I'd like to understand what the board, what the board feels, like what Julie just articulated and a number of other people. That it's a feature of the program that we want to have, so much so that if we have to overspend at the end, then it's, it's worth having. And overspend by, again, if we don't have the contingency left, we're going to overspend and instead of bonding $9 million, we bond $9.3 million. We have our ring, we have our field and we drive on. That's what we're talking about here. So it might not, to Michelle's point, it might not come to to pass because if Greg and the building committee continue doing the work that they're doing, you know, optimism, we'll, we'll have some of that contingency left by the end of the day and it won't be 280. Maybe it'll be less, maybe it'll be zero. When they'll pull it in under the line and this will all be moot. But, but from a construction standpoint, we're doing the right things first and we're thinking, and we're thinking about it because the board has given the building committee clear direction that we want to have this thing at all costs. And at all cost means worst case 280,000. That's how I think we should be thinking about it. And it seems a few people haven't spoken yet, but I mean, Lisa, I mean, what's your, what are your thoughts?
So I agree with, really with Julie. I think we need both and I agree with you. I think we need to take that risk and we need to do both. We can't, we can't have a robust riding program without that ring. I mean, it just, it's a little bit ridiculous that we advertise that and they get here and we don't have that. But I also don't want to take anything away from the Chippagod students because I think that's. that's really important. We have six teams, and I just don't want them to feel like the agri-science program is taking the front seat. I think they need to feel important, too, and we have a great soccer program, a great athletic program, and I think we need to do both. So I agree with you, Anthony, at all costs. We need to do that.
Michelle.
Just a couple other points that I feel hadn't been brought up to, in favor of doing both. The, we kind of touched on the fact that the lower, the lower fields across the street are not optimal. They're in wetlands, they're across the street, they're a little bit far. I mean, obviously, they're, we can, they can walk, but it's not ideal. And the current practice fields are rather swampy as well. We've all walked across them. So here's, here's actually a, an opportunity to improve what we currently have while replacing the space, because we have sixteen, we still have six teams on two fields, and they tear them up, because they're overused. We shouldn't have two varsity and JV teams splitting the fields, their game field. It's crazy. So if we could use this opportunity to actually improve the very marginal space that we have, then I think that's worth it. And then my other thought about the riding ring, yes, it's every, I agree with everything that was said, part of the program, part of what we promoted. But I also want to think about our Chapag students having lived, they will have lived through a year of construction to have something incomplete right in the middle of campus to only be waiting for the trucks or whatever to come back to finish it and tear up more grass and parking and all of that. Like, it's, it's right in the middle of campus. I would really like the project to be finished, done, trucks drive away. It's not like it's a marginal around the edges. It is really right in the middle. And to finish it will be disruptive to whatever we're doing at that time unless we wait for a full summer. So I just think for the sake of the experience here at Chapag, it's important to just finish that very, very visual, very central piece of the program. That's it.
Is there anyone else? Greg?
Yeah, I was just going to say that one of the things that we, when the local athletic league decided it really didn't want to maintain the field across the street anymore, it was a burden, they are spending, the number that sticks in my head, somewhere around $9,700 a year just to maintain that field. So over 20 years, that's $200,000, or the approximate cost of the riding ring or anything else. So when you talk about using the field across the street, even though we're using our own people, it's a lot easier to be doing the fields up in one location than to be sending someone across the street to deal with a swampy meadow. And so that, that is another factor that you should, you should consider, that making use of those fields across the street is going to cost us money, because we're going to have to spend either internal resources or something in order to get those fields mown a couple of times a week is what it takes to maintain them during the soccer season. So I just wanted to toss that one on the pile. Look, I want to see both. I agree with the both scenario. And I think that even if we decide that we're going to spend 100% of the cost of one of these two items to get it done, we ought to do it. And I think what the building committee is trying to do is it's trying to tread a careful line by having enough reserve, but at the same time recognizing that we full well intend to spend those reserves if they're not needed for the project, other parts of the project. We full well intend to spend them on that outdoor equine riding ring as well as the athletic field and replacement. So I think that's critical. That's important. I would like to see all of these alts back in the deal. And I think we can get there. But I can't tell you that we will do anything other than our level best to make sure we do that and bring it in on budget. But if you want to take the position that even if you have to exceed the budget, and you want to authorize us to spend the money, that's fine. We can do that, but we will still try to bring them in within the original budget. We're not going to, you know, go on a spree here. We're going to still try to bring them in.
Let me be clear, Greg. If we, if we decide to do it on the assumption that it's completely outside the budget, we fully expect you not to make that happen.
Of course.
You've set a standard. So, you know, it's, not that that's influencing anybody's decisions right now, so no pressure on you and the building committee. Right, Alex? You're good, right? You're going to handle this.
Can I get two riding rings, please?
So.
Can I ask?
All right, so.
Go ahead. So, yes. All right, so I think we're all coming around to, to not rejecting the riding ring here. But I just had a question, something you said earlier, Greg, about the lighting and the Washington height of the.
Yeah.
Lights. I guess we're not grandfathered, but do we know why is it storm danger? What's the reason for that? Because there might, maybe we can get some kind of exemption, so as not to have to spend all the money to do that. Because it's, I can't imagine why that would be the case, and if there's, if there's a reason that it might apply to elsewhere in town, or state roads, or more, you know, downtown, or.
Well, I think it's light pollution.
We are grandfathered, though.
Light pollution?
Yeah, we don't have to take them down.
Yeah. You, you, well, we, see, if we were going to maintain the existing and repair and keep in place the existing 25-foot poles, which is what we're planning to do for the lower portion of the driveway, we can do that. They can't tell you, you've got to take those poles out and replace them. But if you're going to take them down and build new poles, you're going to have to build 15-foot high ones, because they've decided that 25 feet is too tall, and it causes light pollution of the night sky.
So let's not, let's not build new ones. Let's put the old ones back.
Yeah.
Why not?
Well, the whole point is, we're going to keep the old ones there. For a portion of the site, for the lower part of the driveway, we are going to leave the old 25-foot poles in place. We're going to fix them. Some of them need some repairs. But those lights are going to work at 25 feet, and then once you get up the driveway to where it splits to go to Agstem one way and Buss's the other way, that's where the poles are going to be 15 feet. The problem with the 15-foot ones is you need more of them.
Right, right, right. And that's what I mean. So that's adding expense. But so my question then is, light pollution is the reason?
I presume light pollution is the reason, because there's no other reason you would reduce the height of poles unless you didn't want them to be.
And what is, what is light pollution? I'm sorry, I really, I'm.
Well.
Can't see the stars.
If, if you, have, if you ever been on a.
We have a, we have a.
If you have.
Jason, neighbor.
I think the height restriction, is my understanding, is for, the primary reason is for, they don't want houses that are three stories tall. They.
No, it's not a house restriction. It's on, specifically on lighting.
But there's height restrictions in the codes. I mean, that's one of the reasons. With regard to light, light pollution is that the light spreads. There's not darkness.
Well, they have a whole section in the zoning regulations of Washington about light pollution, and a lot of towns started looking at that. And what happens is, the taller the pole, the more likely you're going to see the source of the light from an abutting property. Because when something is 25 feet high, which is several feet taller.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Roof, you're going to see that from over there, whereas you're 15 feet, you're not going to see the source of the light. That's what they're most worried about, is seeing the source of the light.
Right, and that's my point. That's the way it is in the depot or anywhere else in Washington, but we're on a very separate campus here. And that's why I'm thinking there must be some way to get an exemption, because we already a bunch of lights.
We could apply for a variance, but what do we need the variance for? The issue is not, do we want 25-foot lights everywhere? The issue is, we wanted 15-foot lights everywhere, because we wanted all the lights to look the same, be the same height, all be brand-new fixtures. The problem is, we can't afford it unless we have an extra $113,500 laying around to pay for the additional 15-foot lights. The issue is not, can we keep our 25s? The answer is yes, we can. We could keep all the 25s and save a few dollars. But we don't want that. We want to go to newer lighting in certain areas, and that's, that's the difficulty. The problem is not, can we keep the 25s? Yes, we don't need a variance for that. The problem is, we don't want to keep the 25s, but we don't want to spend the money. It was not a high priority item to spend $113,500 to have new lighting on the bottom end of the driveway.
So there are a number. Sorry?
I just figured it was half of the, of the riding ring, almost, so why not?
I'm going to suggest that.
It's out, by the way. It's out of the budget. The 113, five is out.
98 is what I'm sorry. You're right, and that's only a third.
So, so I'm going to make a suggestion. Everybody's got the list, either, maybe two lists now. So the one you sent is November 26th. Okay, so refer to Megan's email, not mine.
Sorry, I was looking at.
Didn't know there was an update.
It's so small.
It's small, and it's larger than the size.
All right, well, well, you can look at, you could look at the one I sent. The items are just in a different order. So on the rejected alternatives, what's on that list right now is the air conditioning for the darkroom at 40K, and the north lights, parking light for 113, 114. And, so where did the ring go? Oh, and pending, pending is interior wall finishes for the equine garage and animal facility for 44, outdoor storage pavilion at 95, outdoor, the ring at 280, and the thermoplastic membrane at 15.3. So we can, we could, tonight, we can, we could put a motion, if someone wants to make one, to expressly bring the riding ring back in and fund it, understanding that it may be outs, you know, completely over and above, and then come back to this list, to the extent that anybody has an opinion about anything else they want to share with Greg. The next time we meet, this is a regular scheduled event, we can come back and talk about, for example, the HVAC, which I understand the superintendent would really like to have, and a couple of others. But just to keep, because the hour is getting late, and we have a few things left on the agenda, so if. Jim?
To add back into its, I'm sorry. Make a motion that the board direct the building committee to add back into its budgeting procedures and its authorization, the outdoor riding ring at a cost of $280,000.
Second.
Could I ask for an amendment to that motion? I don't think you can direct the building committee to build anything.
I didn't say build, I said consider it.
No, what I would, what I would, if you want to recommend it, that's fine, or if you want to authorize the building committee to spend an additional $280,000, provided that $280,000 be used for the outdoor riding ring, that's another way to do it. It's to give us further authorization.
I thought that's what I said, that we authorized.
That's what I thought you were trying to, what you were saying. That's what I thought you said.
I, Greg, your, your language, then, is how the motion is on the, is on the table, if that's okay with you, Jim?
Accept that amendment, thank you.
Thank you.
And I still second it.
And you still second it? Okay. Any further discussion? Julie?
I just would like to suggest that we word it in a way that it doesn't sound as if we're going to spend $280,000 more at this point in the project. I just think that's not a good thing to put out to the public so early in the process.
Well. Okay. And we had a pleasant surprise of snacks this evening. It's, it's, I like to put a motion on the table that we have this every board meeting.
Shall we move?
All right. So that's an unofficial official motion, that we kind of want that.
I'd better have voted for an agenda item to then put it on.
Yeah. We're going to make it an agenda item, trust me.
See, you guys look much happier, so I'll do that.
You get it? You see how this works?
I see.
Feed the beast, we'll be okay. All right, so, we're, we're back. We had a motion on the table to add the ring at 200, to authorize funding for $280,000 expressly for the ring, and putting that back into scope. It's been seconded. Julie, you had a question regarding, do we, do we need to, is the wording of the agenda, you want to repeat that, or did you think about that?
I think what you just said was fine. It didn't say that we're going to clearly go over budget. You just, you didn't talk about that in what you just said, and I like that better.
Okay. Well, Jim, it was your motion. Are you, you good?
Yes. I'm happy with what Anthony said. I never mentioned the necessity of going over budget. I'm hopeful that that's okay.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? Greg?
I just want to be clear, though, and it's going to make Julie and Jim unhappy, that in the event we have contingencies that require us to use up the entire $1,600,000 in contingencies, then you are paying 100% for this field, for this riding ring.
Yes.
Because the state won't reimburse. However, you're technically not over budget, because we're $1,600,000 under budget right now.
Right.
Because we're holding contingencies in the budget.
Right. I, I think the point is clear to the board. Greg?
I understand. I understand.
All right. So, time to vote. All those, then, in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? All those abstained? The motion passes to authorize the funding of $280,000 for the outdoor equine riding ring, and bringing it in scope, back in scope for the project. So, Sue will get you the precise wording. All right? When you do the minutes, make sure we get it right. Okay. The rest of it, we'll circle back at the next board meeting if there's any further discussion on, on the other items. And again, Greg, I really want to underscore, and I will speak, I know Alex is leaving. Thank you, Alex. But please pass along our appreciation to the, to the building committee for all the work that you guys have been putting into us and getting us to where we are. I know there's a little, there's a million little things that you're saving us from having to debate for countless hours as a board, and we probably don't have the expertise or the interest or energy to get into those things. So really, that's very appreciated, and I just want to make sure that they didn't get lost in this discussion tonight.
It did not. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Michelle, policies with a, would you like me to speak?
That's all right, I got it. All right. So the first, oh, sorry.
Second reading of policy, 5142.4, Reserve School Resource Officer.
Yes, this is the second reading, and nothing has changed, so I won't, I won't go too deeply into the policy. I'll just remind everyone that we went over this with our current school resource officer, and he approved everything. It is coming, the language is similar to what is in the memorandum of understanding the contract that he is working under with the three towns. We just wanted to include a policy in our manual, so that if anyone was wondering about the school resource officer, there would be a policy.
Well, just to, just to be clear, that there is, there's a state law, right, that requires us to enter into a memorandum of understanding with respect to resource officers with our local police agencies, right? And that's, to me, the salient point of this policy that recognizes that obligation, and we have, in fact, fulfilled that obligation.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Any other question? Jim?
Move, we approve, I'm sorry, the policy. 5142.4 for a second reading.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes unanimously. Second reading of 51, 41, School District and Medical Advisor.
Yes. So this one, wait, let me just get it pulled up on my computer. We passed for first reading, but the board had several questions, and I did follow up. They're not still yellow, though. All right. Shoot. I'll go back to my. Okay, they're not still yellow, though, all right, shoot, I'll go back to my, so if you want to see the highlighted language of what was changed, you can go to the packet from before. But, there were two, two things that, that jumped out, that want, you want a clarification. One was the statement, each local and regional board of, or the Board of Education shall annually designate a representative to receive such reports from healthcare providers. And, that is coming directly from state statute. I have the, the language here, and, and when we were speaking with Vin at CAEB, that's why he said it's included in, in the policy. So, I think we have limited options, but, but what I would say is that the language is, is there. We haven't been doing this, so I guess this could go into sort of a catch-all of things that the board, there are, there are policies, I believe, quite a few that say things will happen annually. I don't, I don't thi, I think if the legislators were asked about this, they would, I can't put thoughts in there, but I don't think they really thought about this, the practice. So, I would suggest we could put in language designating the school nurses, because that's who receives the health forms, and always have, that, that, you know, so that we could designate the school nurses to receive the health forms until, you know, further notice.
So, per this policy, that would be then, this, our obligation into, as a board, to appoint a partner soon?
Yeah.
Okay, so either, either we put that in there, or at the beginning of every school year, like as part of the consent agenda, for example.
Right.
We could put an item on, in fact, to your point, if there are other obligations inside of our policies where we're supposed to be appointing people or doing things on an annual basis, you know, we could get that list together, make sure that the superintendent at the beginning of every, the first board meeting, right after we do the organization, that we put those items on the consent agenda, they get approved, and we're done with it, rather than put it into the policy as an option.
Well, it has to be in the policy according to state statute, but what I'm saying...
No, no, it says in the policy, we're obligated to nominate, to appoint somebody.
Right, right, right.
We do that appointment through consent agenda at the beginning of every year. We don't have to call out the nurse in the policy if you don't want to.
Right, or we could do, we could do both to, to cover ourselves, I mean, I, I like the idea of the consent agenda, and, you know, it'll be a task.
Just in case you change your mind, we don't have to change policy.
Right, 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 which is why we don't, which is why we don't usually designate, although I can't imagine who else we would designate. That one seems pretty straightforward, it's not like part of a committee that's got ever-changing members. Our head nurse is probably always going to receive that, but, but since that's what the state, since that's what state statute says, has to be in the policy, maybe we'll just leave it, and we'll create a list of the things that we're supposed to do.
Yeah, so, want to, because if we pass this tonight, we, we have to then make the appointment, so on the next board meeting, we put that on the consent agenda, so then we could become compliant with the new policy we just passed.
Sure, sure, and then we just have to figure out how to remember to do that annually.
Right.
We'll have to, and, and I'm sure there's some other things out there, so we'll, we'll keep our, we'll keep our, we'll look for those.
Yeah.
And start a list.
Well, the secretary makes a list, and the secretary should do that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure the superintendent could put it on her list.
Yeah, we, we got it covered.
Right.
Okay.
All right, all right, the other, let me quickly address, there was, there is a phrase, and of course, I'm probably not going to be able to find it quickly enough, but it, I think it was something like along the lines, "As the case may be..." Remember that one?
Yeah.
This is a first reading?
It's a second.
Second reading.
Second reading. How did I? All right, that's the first page, that's the second. I'm not finding, has anyone found as the case, as it were, or as it?
No, I know what you mean.
Remember that one? Anyway, the, the, that, that language was included by CAEB, and the answer to why was that, based on federal legislation, districts cannot prevent a homeless child from enrolling in school due to a lack of records. So, it was, when we talked about, that there are exceptions, so it's...
It's a sentence that says...
It's after the, the number list, "The child will not be allowed, as the case may be..."
Oh, there it is, yeah.
"...in or continue in district schools unless health assessments are performed as required." So, that makes sense. What you're saying makes, makes sense.
Yeah, so, it's, it, it may be cumbersome, but there are exceptions, and it doesn't...
It's a real carve-out for some reason.
Yeah, so it was on purpose. And those were the two questions about this policy. Everything else seemed pretty straightforward. The things that were taken out, were taken out either by CAEB or our nurse or medical advisors, so, and it all checks out with the law.
Alan?
I move to approve policy five-one four-one, student health services for second reading.
Second. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. The next policy is a first reading of forty-two twelve dot four-two, drug and alcohol testing and training for school bus drivers.
Yes, so...
Look a good idea.
If you open up this policy, it's a very short policy. The yellow language is what is new, it is based on new legislation that is requiring bus drivers be trained to administer EpiPens, and it is required because it's new law, so, so we're adding this. The blue language was, so the committee wanted to change the title, because what they had given us said drug and alcohol test, drug and al, I think it was drug and alcohol, yeah, it was something, we thought it was, it just made it, it was a strange place to put this, and since this is the only, this is, well, the bus driver policy, we just wanted to make it a searchable title, so that if somebody was trying to find this, they might, they might have an idea of what this was about. So, it was drug and alcohol testing and training for school bus drivers. Yeah?
I move... Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jim.
I move we approve forty-two twelve point forty-two as first reading of the board.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. First reading of forty-two twelve dot forty-two. Okay, the next one up is first reading of fifty-one forty-four dot one, physical restraint, seclusion, and I can't read the rest of that. An exclusionary timeout, thank you.
All right, so the new language is in yellow, and this is all due to new legislation about exclusionary timeouts. So, you can, you can see, it's sort of sprinkled throughout the policy.
Megan, can you explain this for us?
Happy to. So, there are progressive ways to de-escalate a student. So, one of them is an exclusionary timeout, is, I've told you, you need to go take a break. You can go in the corner of a room, you can be somewhere, just a cooldown period. Difference between an exclusionary timeout and a seclusion, a seclusion is where you actually stop the child from leaving an area. So, let's say a child is being disruptive, and they're in a classroom, you're with them, and you're standing by the door preventing that child from leaving, that is a seclusion. And then escalating that much more, if a child is going to do harm to self or to others, you can do a restraint of the child, and only certain personnel are trained on how to do that. We do have to do, and is state obligated to do paperwork for any physical restraint or seclusion, but there is not paperwork that is for an exclusionary timeout. So, understanding the difference, knowing that it is a progression way to take a child from being escalated and how to bring them down, we always want to do the less invasive, and so exclusionary timeout of the three is always going to be preferred way to do it, but that is the progression in which it is handled.
So, are these the exclusive ways now to handle a child in these situations, these three levels?
Yes, a dysregulated child, that is the way that we, you handle it. Again, it's getting them separated from the, from the catalyst that is causing the dysregulation.
Thank you.
Dysregulated child.
Yeah, define that. I was gonna, what, is it, is dysregulated child defined, or, I mean, I understand what it is, it's a child that's having difficulty, I suppose. Thank you.
Is that term actually in the policy, anywhere?
The way that it is...
I don't remember seeing it, but...
No, definition, it goes into the conditions pertaining to the restraint, so it gives you more of there's, if, if it's harm to self, harm to others, so, as far as, I use dysregulating because it's enough to talk about the behavior that is atypical, and it is something in which the child is not in control of self.
Jim?
I move we approve five-one four-four point one, first reading of the board.
Alan, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Adopt policy five-one four-one, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, five-one four-four dot one for first reading. The last, and, policy on the agenda for this evening is a first reading of fifty-one forty-one dot two-one, administrative medication.
Yes, I'm trying to remember.
Isn't that supposed to be on the list?
Yeah, yeah, oh, here it is. Okay, so, it was the school bus drivers, again. It's administering meds is, they've added school bus drivers as a category of people because, wait a second, where is, I'm looking for where, there's transportation, is, as you, as you...
Carrier and school bus driver.
Yeah, as you scroll down, it talks about students with allergies, and when an EpiPen may be administered, and it's, the state law includes while receiving school transportation services, so that needed to be added to the administering meds policy.
Can you give an example of, of a, just to be distinctive, what, a carrier, whom a carrier like Ed Edmonds, would that be a carrier?
If they're dri, if they're carrying students.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Right, so that, so the carrier is up in the definitions, yes, but if you scroll down a couple pages towards the bottom, well, and you scroll down, there's school bus driver, highlighted as a new definition of somebody, and then further down, you'll see the language where they talk about the actual admin, when an EpiPen can be administered. So, it was, it was that, and that, and that's all that's new to this policy. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom, you'll see that the school bus driver's training shows up again here, as in the other policy. It's a little redundant, but they suggested having it in both places, just to make sure it's covered, because it definitely falls under transportation and administering medications.
Alan?
It, it seems as if this is putting the onus on the carrier, so, just by the definition above, way back up here, carrier means any school district, so is it, the school district's responsibility to make sure that All-Star trains their bus drivers, I guess that's the chain of command here? Since we're technically a school district as a carrier, but then there's also a corporation under contract engaged in the business of transporting the students, so there's two carriers involved at any point under this definition.
Two carriers?
Yeah, us, because we're a school district, and the actual corporation engaged to move the kids.
Well, there's a bunch of ors, though. It's the school, it's who, it's whomever's actually doing the transporting.
Uh... Okay.
Not, not, it's not our responsibility as a...
Well, right, but since, but since it's in our policy here, we need this, as opposed, if you look at the very bottom, by June thirty, twenty nineteen, then we have, we're going to, as a matter of our dealings with All-Star, then require some kind of notification that they've complied.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Well, I'm not the board's attorney, and I'm not giving the legal advice, but if this is required by law on the Board of Ed, and I think Alan is correct, that there's a distinction, there are two carriers, I don't know that the board can contract away its statutory obligation. In other words, someone, if there was a problem, somebody could bring suit against the board, it may be that the board has a contract with the carry, with the bus company, and there may be an indemnification clause in there, I would assume there would be, then we should be protected, but I don't know if we can contract away our statutory obligation to provide this issue.
The drivers all have, I'm sorry, but the drivers all have to comply with that, or they...
I'm sure.
They can no longer drive a bus, much the same as if they're not supposed to be drinking, driving the bus, or drugs, or any of the other things, it's just part of what they have to go through to maintain their license.
Bob, do we, when do we renew our contract with All-Star?
Our contract is going to be up, and we typically negotiate that contract.
So, the requirement for this...
It's gotta be part of it, right.
Would, would be, would be part of that.
Absolutely.
Right, right. Greg?
Yeah, this is not a very well-drafted description of carrier, definition of carrier. I think what it means to say is a carrier is any school district, educational institution, or person, firm, or corporation under contract to such district engaged in the business of transporting students. There really should have been a comma after the word district, I'm sorry, or, I'm sorry, or institution. After institution, there should have been a comma, because the idea is if the school district is directly transporting the students, then it should be the responsible party. You know, some school districts own their own buses and transport the kids with their own employees, and educational institution, same deal, but more often than not, it's a, it's the All-Stars of the world, and that's a great name, they are our All-Stars, we hire them to do this, and therefore, they're the one that ought to do. But this, this thing leaves a little bit of a gap for someone to bring suit and have a court tell you whether engaged in the business of transporting students applies to the third-party corporation, or whether it applies to the school district or edu, so it could be that it's any school district, any educational institution, I don't know where the or would seem to say, would seem to comply with what I think they intended to say, but there's a missing comma, and that's my...
So, where would you like the comma?
Well, I don't know if we can change it, if this is a state statute that defined this.
Well, it is state statute, although I guess I should look it up to make sure it's...
But is this definition from, is it, is it verbatim?
Well, it's, I think it's intended to be because it cites it, but I, I did not look it up to make sure that it is word for word with the commas, but I don't see why we couldn't put in the comma to, to clarify our intention. I mean, it's, it's not going to be tested until somebody sues, so, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe it's okay the way it is, but I think, I think legal counsel should pass on it to make sure that we're not getting the obligation slipped to us by this, by sloppy, and I'm telling you, the legislature doesn't get it right every time, the first time.
I absolutely agree. I have seen much evidence of that.
And it's, it's a miserable process, and there's a lot of people with, with, you know, points at it, not everything gets read to this degree of thing, but I just want to make sure we're not the one, because the carrier is the one that's getting hit with all this, I don't want to be responsible.
My, my question to you, Greg, is more about procedure here, so let's just say it is taken verbatim from statute without the comma. Are you saying, thank you, Alan, are you saying, because I don't see why we couldn't add the comma anyway, but are you saying we can't, and then we're stuck?
Well, the thing is, no, but you can contract this away, if you have a good contract with the carrier, they should be ultimately responsible.
Here's...
Though that doesn't prevent someone from bringing claim against the district.
Right, but...
If they had a good contract, I'm sure that's typically...
I think we're just dealing with semantics here, and I, I felt the same way as Greg, but I realize the hitch is, we can't just change the language, because if it's state statute, then we can change the language, but it still won't mean anything if the state statutes, state statute demands something else of us. But here's the statute itself. Carrier means, A, any local or regional school district, any educational institution providing elementary or secondary education, or any person, firm, or corporation under contract to such district or institution engaged in the business of transporting students. Or, B, any person, firm, or corporation engaged in the business of transporting primarily persons under the age of twenty-one years for compensation. So, obviously, we don't need B, but if you notice, that language appears to be, I can't get them both, my, this is dead, so I can't get them both side by side. It appears to be the same language.
Exactly.
So, I don't...
Except for, is there a comma after?
No.
Engaged? Okay, well, so there's your answer, that's state statute.
No, because what they're kind of saying is, local or regional school district, oh, no, it is different, because it, our language says, regional, this is from memory, but you're looking at it, regional, school district or educational institution, right? And then later on, it says, contract to such...
No, no, ours says, can you show it to Alan?
Yeah, I have them both.
Anthony, just share with him.
Carrier means any school district, educational institution, or person. Here, it says carrier means any local or regional school district, comma, any educational institution providing elementary education, or any person, firm, or corporation. institution providing elementary education, or any person, firm, or corporation, under contract to such district or institution engaged in the business of transporting students. So what they've done is they've really, they've really, they've made a list in the first place, and we've done the same thing, and in the second sentence, it's not a list anymore. In other words, if you look at what you all have in front of you, carrier means any school district, comma, educational institution. And then there's this whole or person thing, but then lower, it says, to such district or institution. So in one place, it's school district, comma, institution, and the next place is such district or institution? And that's why it's rumbling in Greg's head a little bit, because it's, it's not a precise mirror of where they first put it in the beginning, right?
Okay.
So I would say, since it's in the statute, that vagary can just stay there. I don't think we can change it, because if it's in the statute, it's unclear there, too.
Okay.
I think Jim's point is, it's all gonna hinge on making sure that we got a tight contract with any carrier we, we engage.
Right.
I agree.
Well, now, now, wait a, wait a minute. If you read, if you read the, the, I just finally got the statute up on the computer here, and if you read it, it's got two definitions.
I know. Ignore, ignore B, though.
Why ignore B? That, that's, that's what we're talking about, because B is the one that you hire someone, a person, firm, or corporation engaged in the business of transporting primarily persons under the age of 21 years for compensation. That's All-Star. That's a school bus driver.
No, but so's A.
So Jim?
I was gonna move to approve 5141.21 for first reading, and to ask the committee to look into this issue with the definition of contract. I don't know why the exact statutory definition would not be put in our policy.
Agreed. Yeah. Second. Any further discussion?
We'll put...
All those...
Carrier.
Further discussion is, why are we approving it for a first reading if it clearly does not comply with the statute? We ought to toss it...
We're gonna amend, we're gonna, we're gonna amend it to...
It's gonna be subject to revision for a second, before being approved for a second...
When it comes back, the carrier language will match state statute.
Yes.
All right.
That's what you're asking for, right?
All right. Yeah. All right.